It is nine oh six and we are starting the Sokegan Cooperative School Board meeting. The first thing we're going to do is ask for any public inputs. Is there anybody here present who would like to approach microphone? And speak. We are, the item on our agenda is about the, the tax cap warrant article. We're here.
Save us three.
Okay. Nothing? Is there anybody online?
There are no attendees.
There are no attendees, so we will. Alright, so let's go into the tax cap article which there was a memo sent out late this afternoon. I don't know if anyone had a chance to read it. Some of the things that are very important to know. There, so George Bauer, moderator, myself, Amy Facy, Steve Chamberlain. Is that it? And then two attorneys were on, talking about just different aspects of the tax cap. And there's many questions out there still. It's never been, let's say challenged for the towns and the school district have it in place, so the questions are kind of hard to get real answers on. Is there anything, I mean? Yes.
Okay, at the bottom of the first page, it says articles related to collective bargaining are included in the case.
Yes.
The tasks are incorporated, so I get that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's. So the very next one says does not impact default budget calculations.
Correct, no, so, so here's the thing, so when there is a default calculation RSA, that tells us how we define and how we calculate the fault. It is not going to be subject to the two percent cap because it's a state law RSA. However, if you have a bargaining agreement that you put on as a special warrant article.
Okay.
And you have your operating budget and you know that, you know, that operating budget is under the two percent. And the special warrant article with bargaining gets passed. The next year, it goes into your budget because it's passed, it's like the same years. Not yet, still subject to that two percent. So if you go over two percent with that special warrant article that next year, you now have to figure out what you're cutting out of your budget.
But only, but only for that first year. Because then the subsequent contract is in the default budget calculation to, to Anna's point.
There, that would be.
So.
That's.
The, the cap, the default budget in the proposed budget. The default budget calculation could, in any given year theoretically, could exceed two percent.
Correct, correct. Yes, that's what we're trying to say.
And you're running into a problem, John, where the default budget is the one that's being passed all the time, because you can't propose anything higher than your proposed budget because you're exceeding the cap. Because of the contract negotiation.
But only for a year one, or so, this, first of all.
Then this is the problem that because there is no language in the RSA regarding tax caps. But they, there was history done by our attorneys and there was language originally in there, that when the tax cap article passed, was pulled out. So now the thinking is, do they mean?
It's ambiguous.
So there's going to be a lot of questions in this tax cap.
Okay, so the, the two statements, the two theories are in conflict, which is what Anna's point is.
I don't think they are.
If you, if you sandborne eyes a contract, multi-year contract, okay? Collective bargaining agreement, let's say.
Yep.
It goes into the default budget calculation the subsequent year.
Yep.
Default budget calculation is not part of the tax cap calculus, theory goes. So it's only true in the first year that that goes against the two percent.
No.
Right, see, that's the, that's the, that's the, that's where the two theories conflict.
Yeah.
If it's in the default budget calculation, it's in there, period. So we're going to say now is you're going to take out.
Wasn't part of the operating.
Year two.
Here, so now we've got a default that has the new collective bargaining agreement.
It's baked in.
And then next year, the tax cap says you can't do a greater than a two percent budget on top of that. So it is incorporated after that.
So collective bargaining determines the rate of pay of teachers in your budget. It does not include headcount. So, for example, if you pass a collective bargaining agreement, that means a teacher's going to get paid forty-five thousand dollars. The next year, when you propose your budget, just like now, if this passes, it gets incorporated in your budget. And if those salaries raise it more than two percent, which they could, then the board would have to reduce headcount. Or cut sports or something, but the values that have been approved by the town for the salaries and benefits are incorporated into the budget. Uh, and then you have to, and those are the rates of pay, so that's what you have to cut with a cap, that's what you have to cut to fund.
Does that make any sense?
That's how it works, that's how it works now, that's how it works now.
It's a terrible idea.
Then it's not true that that default budget is untouched. Because we have a default budget which was the same as last year, minus one-time expenses, and, and you have to pull out people, you riff, but you don't have to fire people because of something. This is by law that you know, you have to.
So the memo was, so the memo was intended to say that the way the default budget is created is not impacted by the cap. The same rules that govern the default are the rules, even if the default is higher than two percent, that exists. That is not in violation of the cap. The law says the school board, if this passes, the Sokegan Cooperative School Board will not be able to present to the community a proposed budget greater than two percent, but the default budget is governed by a different set of statutes, which a cap is not applied, because you have statutory. Correct. To uh, an override.
So, so does that make more sense?
No, I think it's me, I think it might have been how I wrote.
No, I did not say.
I think.
I didn't say it well.
Yeah, so. That.
So yeah, you're going to propose, you're going to, was.
Actually in default, essentially.
Or you're always going to present a two percent budget, no matter what, you're, I mean, that's the sad part of this potentially. And I would not like to produce a budget that just said, well, that two percent cap might just add two percent. I think that's not a good way of budgeting, but I'm afraid that fucking happened down the road if it's me sitting here, looking at.
Well, yeah.
We've heard where meatballs, since we were talking earlier, are, we've got very high inflation on some items. And, you know, it seems, seems.
Would we be prioritizing education or paying for?
Right, and, and really kind of arbitrarily.
Right, I think that's the word.
Might be, or you're right, there might be a year where it's like, okay, well, things are good, we can buy, maybe, I don't know what reasons, but you know, we could do a one point two. My goodness, we better bump it up and, and do a full two and try to do whatever extra repairs we can do, because next year, we're not even going to have the money to say we're close carpets.
Right.
Um, and we've got, I mean, we've learned and we've seen that make sure we're doing maintenance in the schools, make sure we're keeping up with the things we have to do. And to arbitrarily have it at two percent or they've got that whole formula, but you know, the passive living. Thank you, it's really late at night. Um, if that's lower.
Right, 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 could be worse.
Terrible, and particularly if you've got, so you might have a one percent one year, even if you've had four years, where the CDI has been six, seven, eight.
You're hurt by the cost, rising your budget.
It's, it's potentially an impossible situation.
Yeah, the other, the other.
I would vote against it.
Yeah, another concern to remember is, you know, this, this two percent is the tax rate? It's not our budget. It's the taxes. You have to know your revenue. We don't know revenue, we don't even really know the tax rate until the, you know, much later after we vote. So we would be guessing, and that's not healthy.
It's true.
We'd be guessing.
Yes, guess, that's even worse.
It's even worse, um, the one thing that I want to stress everybody is, we are an SB two town. An SB two town allows us to produce a budget that is wholly public. We have Ways and Means Committee, we have a Finance Committee here. There's a public hearing, people can come and hear and make comments. There's a deliberative session, people can come to make comments, they can adjust the budget. Vote on everything in March, a tax cap has lost these towns, where you vote on the people who are producing the budgets and the caps no matter what. And people aren't voting on budgets, we as a town get to vote on our budget, you get to say yea or nay. This two percent tax cap is really for these towns, where people don't get to vote on budgets, they vote people in office.
This.
Exactly. So I'd like to keep, everyone to keep that in mind. Really important, that there is a way for everyone to be involved here from the very beginning, all the way to the point you vote yea or nay on the on the budget in March, so. Anyone else?
The point, I was going to make it as well, so. Echo you.
Yeah.
I lost it, I had not found the list of people that sign this, and I was going to have an absolute right to do this and bring this forward, and I respect that. But I'm not, it's possible I've missed someone, but I'm not seeing names of people who at least were reading and showing up at any of our budget meetings or budget hearings or working on, you know, Ways and Means or Advisory Finance or any of those other committees. So it's, it's troubling to me that this is potentially getting put forward by people who, at least some of whom have not taken the time to actually look at the budget and figure out if, I mean, I would rather they come and said, these are my problems.
Yeah.
This is what I think you should be cutting, and these are the things I think, you know, this is where I see the waste. Um, that, that, they seem to believe is there as opposed to um, not participating in that process and then coming in and saying, you know, you know, there should be a cap.
Right, 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 because I, I like to focus on education, strengths of instruction. And if you have costs going up on, you know, we need to replace your chairs because they're falling apart, that's kind of a important thing. Prices go up there, prices go up on food, well, guess what, I don't have the money to put towards the teachers and the strength in education. That's what worries me in the, in the part of this.
And if you don't fix it, you've got a much, much more expensive problem, right?
Everything's going to go to cap.
And I will say, if there's someone on this list who was not only involved in that and I misread it or misread the names, I apologize to that person. But I, my, my look through, I didn't see folks who were particularly, um, most of the people were not really involved in our process.
What?
I just, yeah, since we have twelve minutes at least, so I have a comment and a question for the memo, for the memo, the analysis. The comment is, is kind of to dovetail on what Anna was saying, I mean, I think the people who put together the warrant and the people who signed the petition, you know, their concerns aren't, aren't irrational concerns, I think, but my read of that is they're looking for some sort of stability in the system, um, that they perceive isn't there. And I would welcome the oppo- opportunity to speak with any of them and have a conversation about that. Because you're right, we do have very robust public participation, whether these people are participating or not, there's opportunities to participate if you wish to. And to look at what is there and, um, raise your voice, and we have a culture here where Ways and Means Finance Advisory is well-respected, um, typically at the board level, so. Um, and we get to vote on it, so I just wanted to say to them that, you know, I understand where you're coming from, and, um, it's, you're not, you know, I'm glad you were able to have this process to get your voice heard, otherwise we might not be talking about this at this, at this level, so. Steve, the question is, um, it's, that wasn't clear in the memo, so, um, or maybe it was clear, when you say, the cap address is the proposed budget only, so if we have, uh, capital reserve funds.
Correct.
It's, that's excluded from capital reserve funds.
That is correct.
So one solution, if this was to pass, would be to do what our town does, basically, was we have a longer ballot with more warrant articles. We'd have the tech, not the technology fund, we'd have the capital maintenance fund, we'd have the chairs fund, the, the furniture and, and facility fund. You know, we'd have the repavement fund, we'd have the, the van fund, and on and on and on.
I agree.
To do the things that we can't do in the budget, and the budget would become solely and exclusively focused on the labor, I think.
Yeah, I, John, I, I agree with you, I think that workaround is, you do exactly that, and you pull that stuff out. I, I, I mean, there's only one cooperative school district that I know of in New Hampshire that has a cap, and Stephen and Stephanie are talking about cities. There's a number of cities, and, um, that, and I, I talked to their superintendent, I'm trying to get a scenario run, one of the questions, you know, just a real specific to see how it worked, but um, they felt, what's, what's, what's really been a benefit the last five years are, are S R funds. So fun, so they received funds from the federal government to make purchases that they couldn't, so they've been able to manage due to the receiving other funds. And one of their takeaways from their experience is it almost eliminates the board and the budget committee out of this, because it's two percent. You, it's, you fill it and that's it, boards don't have a lot of discussion about priorities.
The only thing they would discuss is the priorities and what capital reserve funds to plug.
That would be the, that would be the solution, I agree with you.
So you're going to end up with a budget, so I'm not sure that it achieves, I'm not sure it achieves the, the uh, petitioner's goal, because you're always going to get a budget with two percent. Come on. You are, I think, and, or your default budget calculation is going to be higher, always. Just because you have to, and then everything else is going to be fifty percent pass or check the boxes of all these things that you have, that you need to do to maintain a proper school facility. I'm not sure it accomplishes, if and if it does pass.
Good point.
But there's this way to get a fifty percent truly democratic vote on various warrants to say yea or nay about where the school is going.
Right, right, right. Um, the other piece that if this would double, if this does pass, then we would absolutely have to discuss for next year, the ability to have basically a savings account.
Tax rate stabilization fund.
Yep, tax rate stabilization fund.
Which the state does allow up to five percent of, of your budget, not as, all those discussions would all take place. Because you'd have to, in order to run the schools to any standard of this place, you'd have to avail yourselves of some of these savings mechanisms
Yeah.
to take it out of the cap, so you could run your schools.
So basically, a few years, you would never probably give back your un, reserve fund balance, you put it into this tax rate stabilization fund. And then, after you have so much saved, you can start playing, let's call it a tax rate game of give little money back, like our town just did recently to lower the tax rate, but yeah, you can keep the budget up.
All good points.
It's a big management.
Becomes a shell game at that point.
It does, and I just.
You're sort of losing your transparency at that point.
Correct.
And so it actually ends up having the opposite effect.
I mean, I, I wouldn't be, sorry, Krista.
No, so maybe you are, y'all know this. But it seems like it would have been much easier if it was directly, you said we could not, they could not have done it really directly tied it to ending the budget.
Right, statute says total tax.
It's just a mess, I, I told them it was a mess when they brought it.
Yeah.
I think it's actually going to, opposite of what they're hoping, and it's going to end up bringing in less attention to the budget and a higher tax rate.
We really do have such a dynamic budgeting process. Between Ways and Means Committee and the Finance Committee.
And pick up a mic, so the people who hear the recording can. That, those are dead, yeah.
A long night.
Hello?
And it's unfortunate because we really do have such a dynamic budgeting process. With the Ways and Means Committee for the Emmer School District and with our Advisory Finance Committee. We'd have such great discussions on the direction of the school, on how, why, how we're budgeting, why we're budgeting, what we're spending. And we, we do such a great job of trying to find areas to, to save money, whether it's buying vans for the, for the sports programs and to transport students, or to, uh, save money on, on the special ed program. Uh, that all goes away, we don't. I think.
Doesn't go away.
It becomes less relevant, it stops being such a dynamic system, if we, we've got two percent.
Might not be able to afford the vans.
There's less we can do, there's less discussion, there's less openness, there's less transparency. Because we're not talking about programs anymore, we're talking about just meeting that two percent cap all the time.
Well, I, I guess, I would, if I was to step into the shoes of petitioners and put a counterargument, they would say, sure you can. It just requires, you just need to be more persuasive to the town. You just need the two thirds, it's two thirds, right, I think, yeah, two, two.
Point six.
Point, point six, seven, to win, whatever.
I think it's points, three fifths, yeah, it's three fifths.
Three, okay, six, sixty percent, okay. Yeah, well, they should prob, I have it up here, should probably say, say that. Whatever, super majority, you can call it that. That's what they would say, is yeah, put, put a damn thing on the budget, and if you're persuasive, and it's, it's a, and it's, you, you know, you got to do your work. You got to get out in the community, beat the street, get those people's support. We're not stopping them from doing that, they would say, I think, and rightly so, they're not, just, you know, we're just saying, what are we saying, that, well, are we afraid to get fifty-one percent, or, you know, are we afraid about the super majority? I mean.
I'm not sure about the override, is it majority or is it point six plus one?
Um.
Because I, the latest, I got to follow up, because the latest I heard from an attorney is it's your regular, whatever passes at your meeting, which is a majority, passes, so I'm going to make sure I.
So at the March meeting, but then.
So to, to put it in place, it's three fifths, and to rescind it, it's three fifths, but to override a two percent budget.
It's just majority?
I'm not sure, I, I, I thought, I've been told it was sixty percent too, but I.
But they, would that have to be, would that vote have to happen at deliberative and even in order to make it to the warrant?
That's what I believe, but that's the questions that I'm going to continually unpack and ready for the public.
Otherwise, it's always going to pass if it's fifty percent. March, so it's got to be to get to the warrant, it must be.
Yeah, well, maybe I'm, I'm channeling that from, um, from, um, was it Re- Reber, Terry Reber, who was here explaining, maybe that's.
He did say point six.
Yeah.
He did, and, and I just want to make sure it's consistent with our attorneys.
Did he say that, or did I read that in the statute?
I agree.
Somewhere that's in my brain.
And me too.
Yeah.
And I just want to make sure.
In the petition itself, the, the.
And I want to make sure it aligns with our attorney advice. But there isn't, as Stephanie said, there's not a lot of, there's not a lot of stuff on this, because it's not too prevalent, except cities.
Yeah, and it hasn't been challenged, if there is, um, so, the reason we're having this meeting tonight is um, George Bauer, our moderator, will be discussing this warrant article at deliberative. And because of that, and Amy also needs our vote in order to put everything, um, um, to send everything to the states.
On the warrant, so we have to post the warrant by Monday, and the warrant, because the Sokegan Cooperative School, uh, they voted that all the articles must have the tally of the board and the Ways and Means Committee. We got the Ways and Means Committee, they were seven oh against, now we need the board's vote, so we can add it to the to the warrant, which will be posted at five conspicuous places all over our wonderful community.
Yes.
So.
Are we comfortable, ready to vote?
Did you say, this may not be your major discussion, but it is interesting to me.
Did you say that the selectmen voted unanimously not to accept this?
I thought I heard that, but I would, would need to verify.
I don't know. Sorry, no, I did try to make this a joint meeting, but that didn't go.
Um. So is there any other discussion or do you want to take a vote on this? Take a vote, okay, can I have a motion? Um, you have to say, a motion to support.
Correct, affirmative.
The, uh, petition warrant, our, the tax cap petition warrant article.
I'll second the motion.
Make a motion to support it.
I'm, I'm moved to support the proposed Sokegan School District Tax Camp Warrant Article Petition.
Thank you, you have a second. I need a second. I'll second it, okay. Any other discussion?
Yes, I have.
For discussion, I'll say that I appreciate the hard behind it, and a lot of these people are well, I know, and I'm not willing to have a ill intent, but I think that it's going to create a problem that is going to be difficult to overcome, and it will not, in its current form, solve the problem at hand.
I, I have something to say about, uh, discussion too, I echo exactly what you said, Krista. Um, and what I would add is we should maybe consider looking at pulling some chunks of our budget into reserve funds, maybe more so than we did. This year, we're actually doing that with the technology.
Yep.
And maybe there is some things that are more fixed cost, one-time-ish, kind of like carpets and furniture and tables and these things that aren't, these, these labor costs and, and really build, build up reserves that way, that is still transparent, that's still, that we don't need this to do it. And maybe those, some of those fees could lo, could actually lower our operating budget, which could focus on curriculum and, and, and not so much of our fixed facilities and our, our expenses. I'd be very welcome to have that conversation in our next budget cycle, to see where we might make some more moves in that direction.
And, and before we go, to speak to what Anna had said earlier about the signatories and this process. When I was approached about this very early on in this process, I told you then, I'm not going to support this, because I don't think until you come to one of our advisory finance workshops, or you come and you see how the budgets put together. They think it would assure you that we're doing the due diligence to be good stewards of the town's funds, and, and I did not receive positive feedback about being a part of the process. And that troubles me that there's this, um, cap being put on and no willingness to attempt to work with the process that's in place. I just want to put that on record. Anyone else?
I just, we have, you know, we're going to be looking for people to volunteer on those boards next year, on those committees, but come join us, please. Please, I mean, we, we welcome, welcome all of yous.
And those meetings are public, so even if you're not on the committee, you can participate.
There's still public comments.
Absolutely.
There are people who come, yes, yes, there are. Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Okay, so, those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. Any opposed? And be six opposed, and him is out of country.
I'm texting Amy.
So that does not pass, um. And.
Thirty-two, thirty minutes.
I know, so. Right, we have four minutes, so one last thing, um. Just, Amy has delivered slides. Pretty much put together, there's some changes I'm going to make, but I want, we'll get them sent out to you, so everyone has a chance to start looking at them. Um, Mike is going to present the beginning. I was going to take the operating budget discussion. Um, anybody interested in taking any of the special warrant articles, or the revenue tax discussion? This thing, and then this one, does anyone want to take the tax cap one, are they comfortable, or do you want me to take that one?
You want me to do the tax cap one, I'm, I'm comfortable speaking about it, yeah, I respect these people.
One George, because George will be asking us for a response on this.
Well, we even gave our response, but you're.
Anyway, deliberate.
Explain, an explanation, sure.
Deliberate, if you need to be able to say where we stand and why, cool, cool.
You need to figure out exactly what the override vote would be, I'm not finding it.
It's not.
Yeah, I'm, I'm getting it too, I'll get it, we'll make, we, so we do have a public hearing, but actually, it's after deliberative, we'll have it before deliberative.
Yeah. And then. Yeah, the Turfio Technology and the Capital Management. Those three, and we want to talk to those three. I'd say someone takes all, all frames, they're short, in some ways. I take all three.
You write the script, I'll read it.
I've got the script. I've got a script for what I said before, if you want it. Um, so, Dan, you've got.
You should take it, Kristy.
You want, if you really want it, Dan, you can do it, but if you didn't want to. And one wants to take the revenue or tax conversation. No, he's taking the tax cap.
Basically, tax rate.
But it's a tax rate conversation, I want to understand that, or.
Kristy, you should, you should have a role, you're, you're, seat is up, because I don't know if you're running or not, but if you.
I have, Stephanie and I have declared our fantasy.
Well, then, I think you should, you should, you should take the opportunity to, um, address the constituencies.
You got it, okay. All right, so we'll get the.
To the tax cap.
We will get the deliberative side sent out, everybody, everyone, everyone looking your email tomorrow morning, I think we're going to see really fast. The PanaDoc from Amy, that we need to sign for her to file with the state, uh, the warrant articles. And we have like one minute left.
I think we round in this.
We're on this one, is there anybody from the public who would like to speak?
You have thirty seconds more.
Is anyone online? No one's online? Okay. By the time she's done, we're done.
We're good.
Could you? I wanted to make one comment, that I was sure some boards across the country, not necessarily locally, have adopted policies to oversee and. I wanted to add one comment that portion shares some boards across the country, not necessarily locally, have adopted policies to oversee and fill in some gaps for the books in the library. Because there are a lot of books targeted toward different audiences, um, that are available at this time. To fill in the gap where there's a legal requirement versus, um, what the board thinks about your students. I'll be following up on this comment later, I can email you all the word with the information that I collected.
Okay, great, thank you. It's a great thing to do. All right, and we have nobody online, so motion to adjourn. Second, second.